All right, Jeff, I'm getting the live on Facebook notification. It looks like we have eighteen people joining us in the audience gallery at the moment. Oh seventeen, somebody just, somebody just dropped off. But folks, we are waiting on one or two more of the planning commissioner, planning commissioners to join us so that we can have a quorum for this meeting. So if you're just joining us live on Facebook or just entering the meeting, we are waiting on one or two more planning commissioners to join us to have quorum. Mr. Perrier, Ms. Hibler has joined us.
Very good, we'll go ahead and get started then. We'll begin by having a roll call vote or a roll call to take attendance and in that roll call vote, please also, please vote by indicating present and if you approve of holding the meeting electronically, we need to vote to approve the holding of this meeting by electronic means. So Mary Ann, if you'll please take a roll call vote and those that are present and approve of that, please indicate by saying present and approve.
Chair Perrier.
Present and approved.
Vice Chair Harris. Mr. Wilson.
President and approve.
Councilman Fennell.
President and approve.
Dr. Organe. Mr. Strather. Ms. Hibler.
President and approve.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Let me read a short statement. Pursuant to the governor's sorry, we have some feedback. Pursuant to the governor's executive order number sixteen thirty-four and fifty-one regarding public meetings and social distancing and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19, members of the planning commission may participate by electronic means and the meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the members and citizens of Gallatin. We'll start with a short invocation, if you'll please bow your heads. Lord, we ask that you watch over these proceedings and help us to make decisions in the best interest of our community. Please watch over members of our community who may be ill or fear of the current situation and please be with us and guide us and teach us in the name of the Father, Son and the Holy Spirit, we pray. Amy, if you'll please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I don't have a flag in my office, but Johnny, I see the flag right behind you, so. Johnny, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? You're there in front of the flag.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual is just as strong.
Thank you. Mr. Secretary, do you have prior minutes to submit for approval? Johnny, I believe your microphone is muted.
Oh, well, I didn't press the button here, I'm sorry. Yes, I got minutes dated May the eighteenth, I move we approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on those minutes? Seeing none, we'll take a vote to approve. Mary Ann, will you take the vote by roll call, please?
Chair Perrier.
Approved, aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
The pass four zero.
Okay, motion is approved, minutes are approved. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have seven items on the consent agenda tonight, items one through seven, but staff or I'm sorry, the applicant has requested that item number four be pulled off of the consent agenda and deferred. Do we have anybody in the public who wishes to have any other item pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda for discussion?
If you're joining us in the audience gallery, if you have access to a computer, if you would raise your hand and let us know that you'd like to speak on any of the consent agenda items. I see a couple of familiar names in here. And this is, yes, John.
Just for the benefit of those in the public, I don't know if they're pulled up, if they have the agenda in front of them, should we read the names of the consent agenda items out loud? Or does everybody have access to that agenda?
The agenda is available on the website. Also, as the items come through, they'll be displayed on the PowerPoint presentation here. We do have one member of the public, Vivian Huntsman, who has raised her hand. I'm going to open up your microphone, Vivian, and allow you to talk on consent agenda items. Vivian, your line has been unmuted. Ms. Huntsman. Ms. Huntsman, I've also unmuted Kathy Maxwell. Ms. Huntsman, if this is about the fence variance to the BZA, we can address that with the chair's permission under other business at the would be item twelve C of the agenda. You can, if this, if we can't get your audio working, Ms. Huntsman, you can email me at josh.king@gallatinTN.gov. Last three, six, nine, five. Ms. Huntsman, if you email me, I know we've been in communication earlier to, earlier today and early last week. If you email me, josh.king@gallatinTN.gov, we can add you as agenda item twelve C. And while the meeting's going on, we can figure out what the audio problem is between between us at the moment.
So the consent agenda items, I'm just going to read through them very quickly rather than just stating one through seven. The items that we're talking about in the consent agenda are some, item number one is some surety renewals and extensions to the city of Gallatin. Item number two is Montgomery Office Final Master Development Plan. Item number three is the Sumner County Administration Building Parking Lot. It's a final master development plan. Item number four is the paddock at Kennesaw Farms, which is to be deferred. Item number five is a the re-subdivisions of lot fifty-one through fifty-four at Last Plantation, Fairview Phase One. And item number six is the Domino's Pizza Site Plan. And item number seven is the Metal Glen at Fairway Farms, Section One. So I just wanted to clarify what the items are on the consent agenda, which we typically vote on as one item. We'll officially open the public comment. If there's anyone who wishes to speak about one of those seven items, please indicate by raising your hand electronically. Josh, do we have anyone raising their hand?
Chair Perrier, I've been in touch with Ms. Huntsman. She would like to address the planning commission as item twelve C to discuss a BZA variance. She was granted for her fence and I, Bill, do we have to amend the agenda to add that item? Or because it's under other business, it can be added?
Excuse me, that could be added under other business at that time. At this time, if the board, if the planning commission is willing to approve the consent agenda, please also keep in mind that you're, as part of the approval, you're asking for deferral on item number four. So you would approve all the consent items with the exception of number four, which would be deferred.
Very well. Do we have any other public, anyone else who wishes to speak in the public comment section regarding the consent agenda?
No one else has emailed, phoned call or indicated that like to speak on consent agenda items.
Very good. I'll close, I'll now close the public comment on the consent agenda. Is there any member of the commission who would like to have any of the items one through seven pulled from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as one item with the exception of item number four, which will be deferred.
Second.
We have a second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion on the consent agenda items? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approval, indicate by saying aye. Mary Ann, please, so it's a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Ms. Hibler.
Aye.
Passes four zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda is approved.
Mr. Perrier.
Yes, sir.
We have a special presentation that we accidentally skipped over from GNRC to update the planning commission on the status of Plan Gallatin, our updated comprehensive plan. And we have Mary Turner with GNRC here to present three quick slides.
I apologize, that was listed up there and I skipped right over. Yes, please go ahead, Ms. Turner.
Okay, um, thank you all for letting me join this evening. I know you're eager to get to the agenda. Real quick, I'm going to share my screen so we'll be able to view these slides. Okay, so as Josh mentioned, I'm just joining tonight to give a very brief overview of where Plan Gallatin is, how it's been progressing and where we're heading next. And we've been in the scenario planning phase for the past few months. The public input during the scenario planning phase is going to provide an opportunity for residents to learn more about Gallatin's growth trends and to learn about how different scenarios can impact their quality of life. In accordance with the guidelines provided by the CDC and the Tennessee Governor, we've had to cancel in-person meetings and workshops that were scheduled. So we've shifted to virtual workshops, some virtual meetings and other virtual input opportunities to continue our work on Plan Gallatin. I have on the screen and I'm going to give a quick overview of the input opportunities and activities that have occurred virtually over the past two months. On June fourth, a workshop on the Gallatin growth scenarios was held. The city and GNRC hosted this workshop to share and discuss how scenario, different scenarios for how Gallatin could grow. Mayor Brown gave opening remarks and John Perrier spoke about the importance of Plan Gallatin. Thank you, John, for your presentation on June fourth. That was very much appreciated. Approximately a hundred participants lis, listened to this presentation live and about a hundred and twenty-seven have since listened to the recorded presentation that's on the Plan Gallatin website. Following the June fourth presentation, a survey was shared for residents to react to that presentation. Since that survey was shared, about sixty-four respondents have weighed in on their preferred growth scenarios for Gallatin. We also held community conversations, small round tables following that presentation. About thirty residents have participated in those facilitated, facilitated conversations with the Gallatin planning staff and GNRC to talk with other members of the community and reflect on their growth and development presence, preferences after listening to that. So far, we've been pleased with the amount of engagement that we've been able to have virtually and we hope that'll continue. We're going to put out a visual preference survey shortly. I'm going to touch on that again in just a moment. In the current time period, GNRC staff has been working on drafting the Plan Gallatin document. So an initial draft of all the appendices has been completed and staff is now working on drafting some of the text of the plan. As I mentioned just a moment ago, an upcoming visual preference survey will be released this week. The visual preference survey will be an opportunity for residents to share how the city should look through a series of photos. The survey's been drafted so far with Survey Monkey and there's going to be, it's just be about thirty images long and Gallatin planning staff and GNRC have selected some of those images that'll be in that visual preference survey. In the survey, residents will be able to indicate whether an image is suitable or unsuitable for the community with a sliding bar. Moving forward, GNRC is going to continue working on drafting the plan text and as needed, will be engaging virtually still with you, the commission members and the community throughout this plan drafting process over the next month. If you all have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, that's, that's all that I have to share. As I promised, I didn't want to take up too much of your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and I know y'all are working under tough conditions, having to do it remotely. Good work.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the regular agenda items and we have items number eight, nine, ten and eleven on the regular agenda. That will be the Bledsoe Springs, our items eight and nine, and the Bella Vista will be item number ten and eleven. And all four of those items will come with a public comment. We may combine the public comments for eight and nine and also for ten and eleven because they're different issues, but they're, well, they're the same issue, but different voting items. So if you're here tonight to speak to one of those, there will be an opportunity, a public comment for each of those items. We'll start up with item number eight, which is resolution number two zero two zero dash oh nine three, Bledsoe Springs Annexation and Plan of Service. Jillian, are you handling that item?
I am, yes.
Go ahead, Jillian.
So this is an item number eight is specifically for the annexation and plan of service for Bledsoe Springs. It is for forty-four point seven nine acres located north of Hartsfield Pike and east of Airport Road. This item, as well as the next item, more discussed the planning commission at the last meeting. And they were deferred by the applicant so that they could take into account some of the planning commission's comments and concerns. If you need to go to the next slide, get to the actual plan. So this is the plan that they came back with. You have seen this at work session. So it is still a hundred and two attached town home lots, a hundred and two single family detached residential lots on about forty-five, little under forty-five acres of land. They are requesting the zoning of R six PRD, which is one of our planned residential development zonings. The PRDs allow the developer to propose the lot layout and architecture for a planning commission and city council consideration. They are providing thirty-five percent open space as is required with the zoning. That's shown through your buffer yards, water quality areas and open space tracks. Please take into account that they are showing their buffer yards in open space tracks. This, we are starting to encourage this versus being on the actual lot, so that kind of pulls lots away from the boundaries of the, of the land. The density proposed for this development is still four point six units per acre. The character area for this part of town recommends two to five units per acre, so this PMDP is within this range. It's in the upper range of that, but it is within the range that is consistent with the comp plan. I remember at the last meeting, commissioners did ask about the size of lots of the neighboring subdivision in Sunny Mead. The typical lot was nineteen thousand to twenty thousand square feet. You get to the cul-de-sacs, the bigger ones are closer to twenty-five thousand. Again, that zoning is R fifteen, so those are bigger than the zoning that they have, but just to kind of give you those numbers. This property will be accessed off Hartsfield Pike. There'll be two new roadways and they will also connect that to a stubout point in the Sunny Mead subdivision to the east. The single family construction, if you want to go to the next slide. Next slide, please. There's a graphic and then into the, the single family home constructions, which will be seventy percent masonry or cementous materials and then the town homes, which will be a similar makeup. The planning department recommends approval of the resolution. You did have a public comment last time, but you had made mention at the work session, the last meeting, that you would likely want to open it up again. Especially since we have a couple revisions on this plan. If you want to go back a couple slides to the, the site plan itself. So the, the primary change they made from last meeting to this meeting was they did move two sets of town home units south of the stream away from the closest area of the, of an existing industrial business. So EBA did get, good, take a look at that as well. So that was the main change that they did. The density did not change. And I believe the applicant is, yes, the applicant is, is in attendance, so they'll be there to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a representative for the applicant present? If so, please state your name for the record.
Andy Leith with Greenly Design.
Go ahead, Andy. Do you have anything to add to what Jillian's presented?
No, sir, I have anything to add in addition to what we discussed at the work session and in what Jillian presented. I know the big topic is going to be the density that we are requesting. As Jillian stated, it's within the community character area, however it is on the high side and we understand that. We've tried to do some things here that to offer up some of those concessions in exchange for the density, the buffers and open space and putting those up against the existing residential and considering that we are sandwiched up against the industrial area, which in my opinion would allow for a little bit tighter density from the R fifteen, it's to the east of us. And in addition to that, the railroad right of way is not included in our open space counts. And so once that situation is taken care of, then we'll be above and beyond the thirty-five percent required. Because we intend to put one hundred percent of that railroad right of way in the open space, greenway easement, utility easement, whatever else the city might like. So where we're at with that, as shared with staff today, there is correspondence between the, my clients, or the owner's lawyer and CSX and we're really close to getting that squared away.
All right. If you have nothing else to add, Andy, we're going to hold a public comment, but it will give you a chance to respond to. If the public raises some questions, would you come back on and, and try to provide some responses to their questions?
We would be happy to, yes, sir.
Okay, so Jillian, when you presented this, you were presenting eight and nine together, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so just to explain to the public, I will open a public comment. Items eight and nine are both on the same issue, that's Bledsoe Springs, but item eight, we have to vote on them separately. Item eight will be a vote for the annexation and plan of service. Item nine will be a vote regarding the, the rezoning and this specific preliminary master development plan. But we'll hold a public comment open on both items, eight and nine. So is there anyone in the public, at this time I'll open the public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak in regards to items eight or nine, which is Bledsoe Springs?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Pascal or Michelle Jevonce. Your line's been unmuted.
Thank you, Josh. This is Michelle Jevonce. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, Ms. Jevonce.
Thank you. Yes, I had a couple of comments, questions actually about both the annexation and the the roadways, the two new roadways. So it looks like there's especially the roadway to the east. Does that adjacent property owner, it looks like there's a reduced buffer along the roadway. And I was wondering if that adjacent property owner is aware of that and if they're okay with having a roadway near their property with a reduced buffer. I can't tell if the other roadway on the western side also has a reduced buffer, but that was just a question I had, a concern for that property owner that's next to that. And then also I had a question about the annexation plan of service where there's additional police and fire required and I was wondering when that will be required to be built. We've seen that come up a couple of times with different developments in that area and I'm wondering if that's going to cause a tax increase in the near future for all of us Gallatin citizens. So I would appreciate if we could have those comments discussed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. Josh, do we have anyone else who would like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one else has indicated they'd like to speak on this item. If you could raise your hand, if you're a member of the audience. No one has indicated they'd like to speak on this item.
All right, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment on items eight and nine and open it for questions from members of the commission for either the applicant or for staff. Well, I'll kickstart the discussion by saying that the layout itself, I think is, is a good layout for a property. My only concern is I'm looking at, I just don't want to look at it in a vacuum. I'm looking at the surrounding properties to the southwest and north and they're all larger lots. And I, I think we do need to take into consideration that those lots to the south are even larger than the minimum that they could be in those neighborhoods. So my approach to this, I just want to make sure we're not spot zoning, is the density. I'm not comfortable with the density of four point six units per acre. The, the plan, the, the comprehensive plan calls for a density of somewhere between two and five. And I'm trying to look at everything around it when I'm considering that. The average of two and five is a density of three point five. I think that they should be allowed to consider the CSX right of way, which is going to become part of their property as part of it and then calculate it out and come up with an overall density of three point five, including the ground of the CSX right of way. It's not what they're looking for, they're asking for four point six, but it's certainly higher than what they currently have in the county. That's just my two cents work. But we need input from other members of the commission.
I agree with you on the density part of that, just because of surrounding areas. Did you hear me?
Yes, yes, thank you, Jevonce.
Sorry. Okay, I just no, I'm sorry. Yeah, just the density, just compared to the character, the other places that surround it. Want to keep that.
Since there's only four of us, I'm going to put everybody on the spot. Johnny, you first. Do you have any opinion on, on the matter?
I could go either way. It didn't matter.
Councilman Fennell, do you?
Concerned about the density.
I'm sorry, I was talking over you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, concerned about the density. I agree with what Chairman said and Ms. Hibler said.
Oh, we, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, but before we go to a motion on the floor, let me give Mr. Leith an opportunity to respond to the public comment that we received as well as kind of the discussion that To the comment that we received, as well as kind of the discussion that he's heard from the commission members.
Andy, if you hang on one second, Dr. Organe has joined the meeting. I'd like him to be able to weigh in on this issue as well.
No problem.
I'm kind of like, uh, Mr. Wilson, I, I could go either way, but I think we should caution on the side of the adjacent landowners for sure. And, and I think it's important to hear what Andy says. I know they're looking for maximum return, and I know they have a lot of investment that they have to make, that if we're too aggressive, you know, they may not be able to justify the project at all, but. Yeah, yeah, let's hear what Andy has to say.
Thank you, Dr. Organe. Andy, are you online?
I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
There.
Um, so whenever I take projects like this on, you know, I'm born and raised in Southern County, I don't live in Galatin, but Galatin is my bread and butter, and I want Galatin to be the best it can be, because that's going to ensure the success of my business for years to come. So when we present projects, my projects for Galatin are not one and nuns, as I might represent in other cities. And I say that to be, when we evaluated the densities, when we evaluated the product to put here on this tract of land, we really tried to put forth something that everyone can be proud of. So in addressing of the density to the areas to the south, you're talking about areas that are south of Hartsville Pike that are along Hillsdale Drive, Robertson Road, Holloman Lane, and yes, those lots are larger, they're all on septic or majority are on septic down there. The bulk of our subdivision, and I don't know what's up on your guys' screen right now, because I'm trying to navigate through my own computer. Uh, the bulk of the subdivision's over 600 feet off the right of way on that's on highway 25 there. So I really feel like that the owners on the south side of 25 will be impacted very minimally due to the density of the subdivision. And when I say impacted minimally, I'm not necessarily talking about traffic. We all know that this subdivision is going to increase traffic. I mean, anytime you take a farm like this and put houses on it, it's going to increase traffic. We can't argue against that. We are offering up improvements to help alleviate the congestion that it might cause and the inconvenience. But as far as from an aesthetic point of view, you know, those guys across on the south side of 25, the bulk of subdivisions are over 20, over 600 feet away with buffer yards that will be planted to screen them from the, the, the majority of the subdivision. To our west, we have the railroad right of way and the industrial park. And to the east, we do have larger lots, and that's why we provided the bigger buffer over there on that. And when I say larger buffer, I know that we're providing the required buffer, but however, the, we did not shrink the, the minimum lot size. So in a sense, if I'm trying, if I'm making sense to you guys, it's a little bit larger lots over there if we were to put that buffer back into the lot as opposed to leaving it in open space. So we've tried to consider the neighborhood adjacent to us, and with the screening with the larger lot land areas up against those areas to the east and trying to minimally impact it. As we stated in the work session, the price point we're trying to hit here for these homes is in the 250 range. This location was targeted with, due to its close proximity to Airport Road and the industrial center. So we're trying to provide a product that we feel like is lacking in the community right now. If we lose density, it is a sad fact that we will not be able to maintain that price point just due to the cost of construction. So it's not necessarily going to kill the project, but it definitely will endpoint, it will impact the price point of the homes. And to answer the questions brought up by Michelle, the drive to the east would be more than happy to scoot that over, that is up against a duplex lot. And we were trying to space it out, just in driveways and existing accesses on the highway there. And it could be scooted over further away if it pleased the engineering department. The fire and police is our understanding that with the latest annexation of the Woolhull project, that those services are going to be required regardless of this project. So I'll still hang out here if you guys have any more questions.
Thank you, Andy. I just want to reiterate what I said in the beginning is that, looking at it in a vacuum, you've done a good job with this area and you've done a good layout. But just my opinion, I have to stick, when I look to the, the, the comprehensive plan, it says intent of this area is to maintain residential uses, which you have. Preserve existing tree cover, well, I don't know if you have or not, you probably have on the CSX boundary up there.
There's, sorry, there's, there, the tree cover that's there, we pretty well will be maintaining it with the exception of where the existing house is located.
Okay, I mean, it's hard to preserve tree cover when you are going in and doing an entire development, I understand it, but I'll just cut to the chase. Is the, the one bullet point is it says accommodate infill developments that complement the scale, setback and style of existing adjacent homes. And that's the one I'm just having difficulty with on the east and the west. I'm not real concerned about the south, which, by the way, for everybody's benefit, I kind of missed that. North on this map points to the right, so if the, the east side is the one I'm most concerned with, and then a couple of large lots on the west. Andy's right, the ones on the south are across a major road. It's not impacting them very much, but I'm very concerned about the impact you're going to have on the neighborhood to the east of this development. And with that, I'll stop talking and let someone
I just wish, I'm sorry, John. I just wish there was some neighbors or some landowners out in the area that give us their opinion of what they think. I mean, value their opinion right there. And is there anybody in the audience that is, you're listening to this meeting that, that is actually a landowner in the area? A resident?
Councilman Fennell, no one who is in the Zoom meeting has indicated such, and I'm checking to Facebook to see if there's anyone on Facebook that's a resident of that neighborhood. If you could indicate so and join us on the Zoom meeting for official public comment, or you can alternately email josh.king@galatinTN.gov.
And Andy, I'm not against this development, uh, density concerns me a little bit. Being here in business in this town for 36 years, growth has happened that I've seen happen here every day since I've been here. And it's, it's going to continuous to grow. You know, you're, you're not going to stop it. I think the main thing is that we grow in the right way. And that's the only thing that really concerns me is about the, a little bit of the density in this particular development.
Hey, John?
Yes, Dr. Organe?
You, you may have studied this enough, what does it do to the total number of units by cutting it from four point to three point? Or Andy, a rough number?
Sure, give me one second and then I can tell you that.
Ms. Organe, that would be roughly reduce it from about 204 units to oh, 160 or so.
And, and Bill, is that based on 3.5?
Yes, sir. I assumed about 46 acres, including the railroad right of way, their portion of the railroad right of way, 46, 47 acres. That gets you in the neighborhood of 350 or 150 to 165, 155 to 165, somewhere in there.
So what would happen if we decreased it at the adjacent, to the adjacent larger lot landowners and possibly increase the density a little bit on the interior?
I mean, we're open to compromise and I, and I, that may be a good compromise point there, which would be to provide some larger lots, maybe some R15 PRD style lots up against the eastern boundary, which would be the existing subdivision. As far as a price point on the homes, and of course, I'm not a land appraiser, and I don't even try to be one, but I do not feel like it, this will devalue those properties to the east of us. If you're strictly comparing lot sizes, then yes, they're not the same lot size by no stretch of the imagination. But for what the, for price points, I really don't feel like that the, we'd be devaluing the properties.
Mr. Wilson or Mr. Tevler, do you want to weigh in?
I like the plan, and I'll probably vote for the plan like it is.
I'd like to, I'd like to see maybe how Andy was talking about changing the lot size that are adjacent to the, the existing area, existing neighborhoods, I mean.
You know, Ms. Tevler and I had the opportunity to serve on a board together, another board, Shalom, and they did a study in the community, getting input from the residents of the community, and one of the number one concerns was the need for affordable housing. So I understand what you're trying to accomplish here, Andy, and I don't want to be an obstructionist to that goal. Uh, I just want to follow the comp plan the best I can, and that is accommodate the surrounding homes. So I'm inclined right now, I would have to vote against this plan as it is, but this is just my opinion. If you were to bring back a plan that created larger R15 style housing along that eastern property boundary, I would be okay with a density of 3.75, which would bring you somewhere down from, instead of going down from 204 down to 160, it puts you in the 180. Way, maybe even 185 homes, and I hope that you can make that work for your price point, but I'm just one opinion here. But as it stands right now, if we have to make a motion and a vote, I would, I would have to vote against this. So I guess I'll leave that to you. Do you want to, do you want me to proceed to take it to a vote? We have, we've had a lot of discussions, or would you like to defer and come back with a different plan?
I'm, I'm conferred with my client right at this moment, and the truth of the matter is, and you guys have been a part of Galatin enough to know that that we can, Galatin can sustain a pretty high price point on new homes. So it's not that we couldn't make this development work, it's just we couldn't make it work and keep the pri, keep the homes priced where Galatin would like them priced at. And I say Galatin, meaning some of the things with the EDA to provide that workforce housing. So I'm definitely not trying to be argumentative here, because we can make a subdivision work with 150 lots, 150 units, uh, but they wouldn't be $250,000.
Yeah. And my, my suggestion would be that if you were to change anything, it would just be taking that row of lots that, that are along the eastern boundary and just making those wider lots. They don't have to be deeper lots, but if they're wider lots, it gives a little bit of a transition to the adjacent properties, and that's really the only stretch we're talking about is, well. And it, I, I can see if those were wider, it might even be that you could go a little higher than 3.75, maybe even push four units. But that's the stretch that's a concern.
No, and we don't mind to do that, so if the planning commission, you know, understanding that if we could do larger lots along the eastern boundary line, it probably would mean our town home to single family ratio would change a little bit. If the, the body is not opposed to that ratio changing, the same still be there.
Andy, what was the square footage for a unit on your single family town home?
I believe, Councilman Fennell, it's in the neighborhood of 1,500 square feet.
Uh, Andy, when you said that the ratio of townhomes to single family would change, are you suggesting that you'll have to add more townhomes than are currently shown, or are you simply saying that the removal of some single family lots will change that ratio?
Possibly a mixture of both.
No.
To be, I mean, to be quite, you know, honest with you guys, if we're trying to hit a certain density, this project is about 44.8 acres. And I think that the railroad right of way is going to come in about an acre and a half. That's 44.8 plus 3.75, that puts us around 173 units at 3.75.
Okay, well, I think the ball's kind of in your court, Andy. Do you want me to call for a vote, or would you like to redraw? And defer?
Let me, these virtual meetings certainly make some things convenient, but other things inconvenient, I'm texting my
While he's figuring that out, I want to do, uh, mention that we did receive a memo today from the fire chief who indicated that if an additional fire station is needed in this side of town to serve not just this development, of course, but other developments. He gave some details on the response time from the primary stations that serve this area. And he had suggested that the city begin planning for building another fire station in this area that would be able to be the primary service station for this development and some other developments, of course, that we've recently reviewed. The city does own a piece of property in the industrial park just to the west, and they have intents to build a fire hall there, although it's, it's not funded.
Yeah, a second question is, we have items eight, kind of eight and nine are open right now. Is it too unorthodox to table these items, move on to items 10 and 11 for the benefit of the other, you know, the public who's waiting to speak? And then come back and take a vote? Can we temporarily hold an item to let Andy have a chance to confer with his client?
Yeah, I may be right here, I've, I've heard back from him. And he's, he's listening, I don't know. Josh, if you can see if that registers in on how you can see, where people can just listen without you knowing it, but he is listening to the, the meeting right now.
Andy, this is Josh. I can promote him to a panelist to allow him to speak on his own behalf, if you tell me who he is.
Okay, his name is Brad Edwards. Probably looking for a phone number of 615-389-7695.
Okay, I have unmuted, I have 6154 is the only phone call in number I have as an attendee.
Okay. That may, 6154, you said?
Yeah, all I, all it is showing is 16154.
Okay, that's probably not him. Okay, well, here's the, uh, the thing is, you know, of course, we've already waited a month with the last deferral. Uh, he's serious about this to the point that, you know, we've already had a traffic study, we've already done the hydrologic determinations, we've already done all those things that I typically argue against doing at this stage. Because he does want to move forward with this development. So that, uh, he's serious about it. And he's saying he's got bad service right now. I don't, I mean, I know this is somewhat, somewhat of a negotiation, and I'm not trying to be a used car salesman here. I'm not that kind of person, no offense, Councilman Fennell. But, uh, he said that if the planning commission was agreeable to 185 units, he would, he would be willing to knock it from 205, 204 down to 185 right now. He feels like he can still make the price points work. And that would roughly be a density of four.
Well, it sounds like the applicant's certainly willing to work with our concerns, and I'm not sure that we can vote. I think you have to redraw it. I, I don't think we can vote on an item just with the promise of knocking it down. Can we? Need some guidance from staff.
Want to vote on a density of four instead of 4.6?
John, I can support that. John Nuckin support that.
Commissioners, you can put, place additional conditions on this design that would end up reducing density, but you also may want to specify that in that reduction of density that it's based on the gross acreage of the property, including the railroad right of way. And then you can specify certain size minimum lots that you want to apply on the east side of the property and or any mix in the types of units that you have, so to maybe allow additional townhouse units. You can add those as specific conditions. But they do need to be, you know, very specific in your discussion and or your motion as to what those parameters would be. And it will require the applicant to then redesign or reposition, I should say, some lots and or types of units. So those lots, for example, on the east side now may end up being maybe twice as wide as they are now, or you'd have half as many lots on that side. And in exchange, some of the other single family lots on the interior may end up being townhome lots.
So to help put this in perspective, we can cut the lots along the east property line in half. And in a sense, double the width. And I would still have to cut out a few more units within the development.
Would you have, Andy, would you have to put more do townhouses? Like in the area that they currently are, or would you reconfigure other things?
So if you guys approve a density of four tonight and, and ask me to double the size of the lots along the eastern property line, I would not have to add anything. I would actually still have to take out a few units. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't be adding back any townhomes, so to speak. I'd have to somewhere I would need to take out a few more units to get down to that four units per acre.
Okay, now if I understand correctly, those specific amendments would have to be applied to a separate vote on item number nine. Number eight is just the vote to annexation and plan of service. Am I correct on that, staff?
Yes.
Right.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion regarding item number eight, which is only the annexation and plan of service for the property.
Okay, I believe we approve item number eight.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Wilson and it was seconded by Dr. Regan. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call for a roll call vote. Mary Ann, if you please take the vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson. Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the item number eight is approved.
I think is Mr. Strather on the line? I think I see his name.
Yes, I am.
There he is.
I voted yes.
Sorry, Mr. Strather. Okay, that makes it six zero.
Very good. So item number eight, annexation and plan of services approved. I'll entertain a motion on item number nine, if y'all would like, I'll, I'll craft a motion, but I'll leave it to someone else if they'd like to take a shot at crafting that very specific motion. All right, let me pull up item number nine and look at staff's conditions. And Andy, you did not have any issues with any of the ten staff conditions were placed on that?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, then I will make a motion to approve, but adding condition eleven which states that the single family residences along the eastern property boundary will be reduced by fifty percent by making their lot width double what they are. That's condition eleven. Condition twelve is that a redesign will be required to be brought back before the planning commission with the total density not exceeding four point oh. And the additional townhomes will only be added if that's the only way to get the density of four point oh. I hope that's clear enough. What I'm trying to state is that, Andy, you think that you'll probably have to remove some extra lots, create more open space, but if it tips one way or the other and you have to add a townhome building to make it work, then you'll add one more townhome building. Does everybody understand that motion?
I, I got all of it, but that last part, he was, Andy had stated that because he'd have to remove more, he wouldn't have to put a townhome uh, additional in.
I, I believe if, are you, am I still muted, unmuted?
No, you're good.
Okay, I believe that if you will allow us to maintain the hundred and two townhomes that we would make up the rest of that density of four with the single family.
The only reason I put that in there, Ms. Hibbler, is I know that we're asking Andy to do math on the fly on a really large development. I didn't want to box him too tight in there, so. So we had items, I had added two conditions, number eleven and twelve. And part of that twelfth condition was that you do have to bring a revised PMDP back before the planning commission.
And do, um, since I'm running still, do we have to put that, um, part about the roadway? He was going to check with engineering about the two roads. He was talking about shifting them. Andy was, sorry.
Oh, you can add that condition, Ms. Hibbler.
All right.
If you'd like to state that as a condition.
Okay, I would like to add the condition of the representative speaking with the engineering department to get the best location for the, the two new roadways that are coming with the development.
Okay.
The end.
Thank you. And condition fourteen, just to put it on the record, to help Andy, is that the CSX right of way abandonment will be counted in toward his total acreage when he's calculating a density of four point oh units per acre. So we have a motion to approve with fourteen conditions. Any discussion on those?
Uh, Chairman, I'm a little confused on number twelve, so new PMDP is supposed to come to planning commission before they go to city council?
Maybe I'm off base on that one.
Because this would go on to city council.
If I can, what could happen is that if you approve this plan with these, what I got is three additional conditions. Is that this plan would be approved and could be modified again by the city council. But also could be mo- could be, but not required to be modified again. When the FMDP comes in, my guess is that there will be a PMDP amendment associated with that FMDP most likely. And that, that would be an opportunity to, to make some refinements.
You know, I'll amend my condition twelve about having to come back before the planning commission because we have a member of the city council here on this body. And Sean understands the intent of what we're doing and he'll keep it in line at city council. Councilman Fennell, you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Regan?
Is this the abandoned rail line that goes to Westmoreland?
Yes, it is.
If we approve this, does this prevent us in the future of having a greenway that goes from Gallatin to Westmoreland?
The applicant's already proposing to have a greenway easement on the portion that they'll have. They're not planning on developing it.
Perfect. Thank you, Andy.
We try.
That's a great idea, though, isn't it, Dr. Organe?
We're already rolling with it. Hopefully.
So I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Bill, you said you'd only heard three additional comments that we added on to this or conditions. The, the only reason I added the fourteenth was just wanted to put it in writing for the applicant's benefit that we make sure that we, he gets to count his CSX railroad abandonment as part of his overall space, but if
Yeah, I believe they, that's, that's a condition and that's also shown on the plan, the revised plan. I know there's been some confusion and I wanted just to summarize the additional conditions that y'all had talked about and included in your motion, if that's, if that's okay. And let me know if I'm wrong here as well, because I was trying to write this down when y'all were saying that, is condition eleven would be that the lots along the east property boundary shall be twice the width that's shown on the plan. So I, I, I'm not sure what they, they're, I guess, sixty foot wide lots, so they'd have to be a hundred and twenty foot lots. Or if they're fifty, they'd be have to be a hundred feet. Essentially, you're getting half as many lots on that east side. That would be condition number eleven. Condition number twelve is the total density shall not exceed four units per acre. Additional townhomes may be added to allow for up to four units per acre. Condition number thirteen would, is that the item be brought back to the planning commission in which you've decided that you wanted to strike and remove from your motion. So we'll remove that. And then item number fourteen, which will now become item number thirteen, was Ms. Hibbler's amendment to the motion to add a condition that the roadway and where I think we're talking about the easterly roadway be moved further to the west to away from the adjacent property boundary. And that would be up to engineering to determine what would be the appropriate distance from the intersection there. I think it's Robertson Road. I believe that's what Andy was doing, is trying to move that intersection as far away from Robertson Road. So there wouldn't be an offset that would not comply with the subdivision regulations.
Yes, Bill, you summarized the conditions very well, except number twelve. I just want to be really clear that, that when I stated condition number twelve, it was that in order to meet the density, he could add, if it was necessary, might add up to one four unit townhome building. I don't want to see sixteen single family lots get dropped and four four unit townhome buildings get added.
Mr. Perrier, I had that condition thirteen was to amend the motion to, or to speak to engineering about the new roadways. Ms. Hibbler, and fourteen was to put the railroad right of way to be added to the total acreage. Am I wrong in that?
That is what I said, we stated, yeah. So we've had a lot of discussion. I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll before I call for the vote, is anyone, is everyone clear on the conditions or does anyone need any, have any questions?
I don't believe you got a second yet.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so second, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Second, if I'm Johnny Wilson. Any discussion? Then Mary Ann, if you'll please call a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell. Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Strather. Mr. Strather.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number ten. Ten and eleven will be presented together as one, but we'll take separate votes on item ten and eleven. Item number ten is the Bella Vista Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And then item number eleven will be the Bella Vista rezoning with preliminary master development plan. Who's presenting this item?
Dustin Shane, Gallatin Planning.
Go ahead, Dustin.
All right, so this first item is stated is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment for the Bella Vista project. As you can see, it's located south of US thirty-one, east of Airport Road. And if you'll take a look on your screen, I've called out the community character map for this area. And when I change the slide, you'll see that it's this southern portion of this kind of pie shaped parcel here, that we're going from Airport Road Industrial to suburban emerging residential. And the whole point behind that is explained at work session was that the part, the part of the property was outside the city limits when it was, when the comp plan was made. So now this is basically just rectifying now that that piece has been annexed to bring that character area map to be consistent across the, across the parcel. So moving on, that, that's the first step. This, now here's the P, the rezoning with the PMDP for Bella Vista. It's, it's currently zoned agricultural residential, abutting some R fifteen areas. It's a proposal for twenty-nine single family lots, two open space tracks that encircle the property. These meet the PRD requirement of two and three quarter acres of open space. It's got one, one public right of way with some traffic calming measures. The density for this one is much lower than the previous item. It's two point thirty-three units per acre. So it's pretty much a straightforward subdivision. This property is, as I stated at work session, was approved at one time for a driving range by the BZI, but then rejected by the planning commission for that. We worked with the applicant on our concerns about the buffers and the open space. Those are now good. They're proposing to provide the stubout to the southern adjoining parcel. We are still asking for the stubout to the east to parcel forty-two there. So that may be a point of contention. And then we're also putting a condition on there to reserve an access easement because the comp plan has the greenway coming through here. So we'd want to make sure that there was easement in place for that, if that occurs one day. That's all I've got. Thank you. The applicant is here. It's Greenland design.
Andy, are you representing?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So hopefully we can make this one a lot easier. We're pretty well in agreement with everything. Except the stubout to parcel forty-two still. And I'll explain my thinking behind that. Of course, we are coming in with low density or lower density here than most every other development coming through Gallatin right now. And that's what the developers want. They wanted larger lots. We completely understand the stubout to the rear. Of course, that would eliminate a cul-de-sac in the future. And do not mind giving that up whatsoever. But as shared at the work session and Nick and I had a brief discussion on this, I just personally feel like giving up another fifty foot of land for a two and a half acre track would be a little unfair to my client. However, as I suggested to Nick, we do have open space there and probably have some stormwater controls in that area. We don't mind to put some ingress egress easements in that open space such that if that adjacent track wanted to develop that they could come across our open space if they could relocate and replace whatever we might need to achieve this development. Meaning if we had to put a detention pond there and they needed a road there, they could put a road there and relocate our detention pond further downhill. So that's, that's the only thing here that, the shape of this, so the lots have a lot of square footage, but you know, our depth is limited to what it is, so asking me to give up another fifty foot of right of way is going to cost this guy, my client, a whole other lot just for the benefit of one small track of land.
Andy, somebody show me where forty-two he is anyway.
Dustin, you want to do that? Or somebody?
Yeah. Councilman Fennell, can you see that red circle on the screen?
I see it. That's what I
That's it.
Okay.
We don't oppose them having access from our public road. We just feel like they should put their pound of flesh in, which would mean, you know, we'll we'll provide the easements. But if they want to connect to it, then they'll have to possibly and probably relocate our stormwater controls.
Okay. Anything else to add, Andy?
No, sir. We're in agreement with the other comments.
Okay. Let me open it up to a public comment, and let me remind the public that we'll go ahead and type public comment on items, both items ten and eleven, which are both regarding Bella Vista. So is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in regards to items ten or eleven?
If you are attending in the audience gallery and would like to speak on this item, we ask that you raise your hand at this time. Mr. Chairman, at this time, no one has emailed or indicated that they'd like to speak on this item by raising their hand from the audience gallery.
Okay. At this point, I'll say that I will close the public comment and open it to questions from members of the commission.
Andy, did I understand you correctly to say as opposed to a cul-de-sac, that there would be additional egress or agress?
Yes, at the end of the cul-de-sac, we've set aside a fifty foot access to the a larger track of land in the rear. And most likely, that's going to develop into residential subdivision at some point in the near future, and that would alleviate the cul-de-sac at that point.
Thank you, sir.
So I'll lead off with some comments. I don't really see the need to provide the access to that two and a half acre lot. I feel like it could develop from the main road just as easily. My question is, so I would remove that condition to to provide that easement or access up there. But my question is, if somebody does develop to the east of this property or southeast of the property, who's responsible for the buildout of that road from the cul-de-sac over to the property line? Isn't it typical that the stubout be built all the way over to the property line? And I guess that's a question to you, Andy. Why are y'all not building it over to the property line?
Um, I don't have any reason that we did not show that, other than we were not asked to. But I don't know. I know it's something that we've done in Twin Eagles where we've not built. We've just set aside the right of way. And this is not something like where we're just giving that adjacent property owner access to it, just for him to bring his four wheelers in and out. This is for future development.
Mr. Chairman, Brian Reif Schneider with the City Engineering Department has indicated he'd like to discuss some of these issues. Brian? Uh, let's see if this works.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Brian.
Okay, thanks. Yeah. So Nick, I'm filling in for Nick tonight. He had a discussion with Andy, and Andy, I think we were under consensus. You were okay with with having that easement up front to access parcel forty-two in the event that they didn't need to tie in there. They would they would incur the cost of relocating that stormwater feature and incur the cost of building a road to the property line and then developing from that point. Does that sound like a fair conversation that you and Nick had?
Yes, did I? And that's I read the comments earlier today. I'm looking at them right now while we're talking. Comment number two doesn't go into that kind of detail, though, Brian. It just says provide a future stub connection to parcel forty-two.
Yeah, and what happened was that conversation that you and Nick had happened after those comments went out, so.
So if you're okay with revising those comments to our conversation, I'm okay in agreeing to that.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, if we can make that addition when you do the vote. Now, as far as tying into the cul-de-sac, I think the city engineer at this point would just like to have that open and not actually have a stub built there. Not not have it paved, but just have it reserved for future as that parcel to the south develops.
Okay, well, no, if engineering's fine with that, I just thought it was typical to build up to the property line.
Typically, it would, but you know, that that parcel forty-five, that's a big parcel. I don't I don't know what's going to happen to that. You're looking at one hundred and four acres. It could go industrial. It could go residential.
That's that's correct. It's a community character industrial, I believe.
Does anyone else on the commission have any comments, questions, or? And we'll I'll entertain a motion on item number ten, which item number ten is just really straightforward. It's a cleanup of the comprehensive plan. Leftover, it's really just housekeeping, in my opinion. I'll I'll make a motion to approve item number ten, which is the Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on that? And then I'll ask Mary Ann to take a roll call vote for the approval of the motion to approve item number ten, Comprehensive Plan Amendment change.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Aye.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, Alana.
Far as item number eleven is concerned, I'll entertain a motion from someone. All right, I'll make a motion to approve with staff's fifteen conditions, but changing condition number two to reword it to say provide an easement for a future stubout connection to parcel forty-two whereby the party exercising the easement would have to relocate the stormwater facilities if necessary.
I second, and based on your recommendations.
Okay, the motion is second by Albert Stroudler. Any discussion on that? See none, I'll call for the vote. Mary Ann, if you'll please call a roll call vote.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Aye.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to other business, and we have a couple of items on other business. We'll start out with Double Dogs Shopping Center Architectural Revision.
Yes, that is my item. So the applicant came to us asking for a quick review of the architecture as they finalize their plans and submit to the building department. On your screen is the approved architecture for the Double Dogs. If you could go next couple of slides to find the revision. This is just what was approved. And then here's what they would like to revise it to. They are on the call. If you have any questions, I believe it was because of the configuration of the inside of it that this roof configuration made more sense with for them. It is predominantly brick, which is more so than it was with the previous version. Staff doesn't have any issues with it, but we wanted Planning Commission to take a look at it just because the roof changed. And I believe there's a couple applicants on here if you have any questions for them.
Sorry, did you say that the applicant is present and wanted to speak?
I I don't know if they want to speak. Let's see.
I have unmuted Courtney Bernardo and Mark.
Yes.
Hi, this is Mark from MJM Architects.
Yep. This is David Bernato with the owner with Double Dogs.
Yeah, we're available for any kind of questions. We're open if we had any kind of comments from you guys, but essentially the reason we went through the redesign is there was some, you know, we developed some slowdown due to the coronavirus, and we have been working on a redesign for the prototype for Double Dogs. And this is where we were kind of led to, and since we had the time, we were hoping to get this developed, this design approved to go in this location as well. This is the first location we would be doing for this one. And to clarify, the shops building, even though the rendering looks a little washed out, the shops building would not change. So the the materials and the design, everything about the shops building will stay the same.
What type of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Fennell.
I'm just wondering what time of, what kind of date they're looking at as far as opening this place.
That's a hard question to answer right now. We're hoping to get started. We would like to get started within the next four to eight weeks, you know, pending approvals, obviously. And we're also, you know, part of the slowdown with the COVID is there's there's no sports on TV, which is greatly harmed the sports bar business, even for family friendly sports bars. So there's been a little bit of a slowdown on that end, but we're hoping that we we can get break ground in the very near future and would like to be open early in twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Fennell is saying that he is starving to death, and I'm thirsty.
Yeah.
This has generated a lot Hey, this has generated a lot of excitement in the community. I hear a lot of good comments about it, and I look forward to you guys opening up soon.
I appreciate those comments. We certainly look forward to being in Gallatin.
Well, obviously, this is not a voting. This is not an item we vote on tonight, but I think you've gotten a positive response from the planning commission. Everybody.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's a problem with y'all voting to confer that you agree with the changes in the architecture. That'd be fine.
I so moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Fennell, no, Dr. Organe, and a second by Councilman Fennell.
That's right.
The hungry ones.
Good. Then go ahead and take a roll call vote. I didn't know we voted under other business, but I stand corrected.
Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Yes.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Good. Another item of other business is replat lot six forty-four and six forty-five of Fairview Plantation Phase Eight.
Yes, Commissioners, this is very similar to another item you had on your consent agenda tonight. The applicant is wanting to combine two lots in the Fairview Plantation Phase Eight subdivision into a single lot. As you recall, earlier tonight, you approved a plat amendment which would allow the property owners to take four lots and replat them into three lots. This is just replating two lots into one lot. And this is a piece of property, or these two properties are on the south end of Phase Eight, on the west side of Brown's Lane, just north of the cart barn for the golf course there. So you can see how those lots are configured there along the west side of Brown's Lane and how they relate to the rest of the lots in Phase Eight. The applicant intends to develop a single structure, which I think they're going to or want to use for like an Airbnb type housing to entertain guests at the golf course. So instead of two homes, you would have one home, and it would probably not be, although it's not, there's no restriction against it, since we are governed by the state statute as far as Airbnb structures. But it would could be just a single home on there that someone would end up buying as well. So at this point, it just gives them a little more flexibility in the placing of structure on a lot and be able to accommodate the guests that they have.
And Bill, I think you're referring to item number five, which was under the consent agenda where we combined the lots over in Fairview.
Yes, that's the similar type of action. So this is essentially the same type of thing, and we're asking for your agreement with this, and if you want to take a motion, that would be fine, too.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion to approve. Who made that?
I did.
Councilman Fennell.
Second.
Second by Albert.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any discussion? Mary Ann, if you'll take a roll call vote, all in favor of approval. Mary Ann, I think you're muted.
All right, Chair Perrier.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Dr. Organe.
Yes.
Mr. Stroudler.
Aye.
Ms. Hibbler.
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Very well. And the last item on the other business is item twelve C, which is Ms. Vivian Huntsman. And on this item, I will recuse myself in the discussion. I'll just take around for any announcements afterwards.
Vivian, I believe I've unmuted you. If you want to address the board with your issue.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm asking that the board or the planning commission change the, I'm not exactly sure the wording, the code for fence height for residential property that backs up to commercial. I live about a block off of Nashville Pike. The houses behind, on Nashville Pike, two of the three houses behind me have become commercial. And third one is, if it's ever sold, will also be commercial. And I put in a fence that was eight feet high, not knowing that I had was supposed to be six because it was residential. But I'm asking that you change that code that if a resident backs onto a commercial property, they're allowed to put up a commercial fence behind their house.
Sounds like a great idea.
I think it makes a lot of sense to me.
Hey, guys, this is Latisha Alexander, staff attorney. This is okay to discuss at this meeting, but if you, this will not be a voting issue because you'll have to take this and you've noticed to the public that it's going before this body for changing our code. So all you can do at this point in time is discuss this.
Can we can we make a motion? Do we need a motion to put it on the agenda for the work session?
Councilman Fennell, we, the staff would request a couple of weeks to confer with other departments and develop comprehensive regulations to the fencing requirements, to word it the best that fits within the zoning ordinance rather than making a spot decision.
All right, let's get it going.
I have one comment. I think we should have it flexible enough that the fence be high enough to protect the residents adjacent to the properties. And that could be using berms and other things other than just a fence. So be very open minded and out of the box as you're looking at this.
Absolutely.
Can I make a comment that there, that one of the businesses that's behind us has was here before we moved out here, and they put up bushes and some trees, but you can still And they put up uh, uh, bushes and some trees, but you can still get through there without a fence. Uh, you can still crawl and go through the bushes and whatever to get out to, since we're just a block off Nashville Pike, um, that was the reason for the fence.
You know, we, we can put some.
Barrier. You need a permanent barrier.
Yes.
But I'm saying that we can study it, we can put some wordage in to protect the homeowner that orders the commercial property, do something right there. Know, something to protect the homeowner.
Yeah, Commissioners, we, I, I think in this case, it might be a good for us in our next work session to describe the events that led up to this issue, and to, to make sure everyone's well briefed on those things that we need to discuss, that we would want to provide some design options that could accommodate the desires and or the wishes of the Planning Commission and the property owners, as well as to ensure that uh, some of the other issues that are involved in this particular case are also addressed.
Well, I think some of those have, have been resolved between the person who first complained about it. She's withdrawn her complaint.
Well, I mean, it's still a violation, and let me.
Right, I understand.
So, so we'll be prepared uh, to describe the details of the case and the other issues involved that um, nece, don't necessarily re, result in the height issue as, as well. There are a few other things that we need to talk about, so. But it, eventually, it will be a discussion item, and then it would come back to you, uh, not at the work session, but at a meeting where you would vote on an amendment to the zoning ordinance to address uh, certain circumstances where there's, for example, uh, residential properties adjacent to uh, commercial properties.
So tell her we got a cover.
Well, right now, there is a case, a code enforcement case, and, and since y'all have agreed to move forward with uh, possibly mending the code, we can suspend enforcement of that. I don't know if you were able to hear me. So we can suspend enforcement at this time until that uh, code issue is resolved.
Yeah, you know, you know, my main thing is that, that a residential property that backs up or adjacent to commercial needs to have a right to do something right there. Whatever we got to do to move this thing forward and get in discussion, that's, that's what I want to do. I guess our meeting's over.
That's all I have to say at this time, and.
Bill, do you have any announcements?
Um, no, not at this time. I don't think so. Um, do be on the lookout, as we saw, heard earlier tonight, for the uh, preference survey that will be coming out, and I hope that each of you will be able to participate in that as well as encourage uh, your friends to uh, also participate in that. That's gonna be pretty important. So that'll be coming out here real soon. Probably, well, probably well before our next meeting.
Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion adjourned. Y'all be careful.